Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to this meeting of the Greenwood County Council, December the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Council has had an active afternoon. We have been in executive sessions since three o'clock. We recessed our executive session to take part in a little reception upstairs honoring one of our council members. And then we gather here tonight for our public session. So appropriately, we need to entertain a motion to exit formerly our executive session. If there are motions. There's a motion by Mr. Pruitt. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor, raise your hands, and we are out of executive session. And in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, the date time, location, and agenda for this meeting has been posted at the Greenwood County Courthouse here at the Greenwood County Library. The agenda has been shared with the various media outlets in our area, specifically the Index Journal. And the agenda has been placed posted on the Greenwood County website. Having said all that, I call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is our invocation. And tonight, our one of our council members, Mr. Pruitt, will introduce a pastor locally who will lead us in our invocation. Following the invocation, we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to our flag. So, Mr. Pruitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for attending tonight. As is custom, we're always assigned with doing the invocation, and we like to defer that duty to local pastors and others in the community. And this time, I have the honor of introducing Pastor Kelvin Henson. He is a chaplain at Wesley Commons, but been in the ministry for twenty-five years. And most importantly, is the current pastor at Temple Baptist Church, which is the church that I grew up in, and my mom still attends every time the doors are open, right? Would you lead us in our invocation, please?
Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we humbly come before your presence at this time. God, we're so thankful for your mercy and your grace. And God, today, we simply ask for your wisdom. The Bible tells us in the book of James that if we lack wisdom, that we ask it of you, and you are generous in giving us that wisdom. You are faithful, and you love us very dearly. You care very much for Greenwood County. And God, I thank you for the council members. I thank you for those of the public that are here today. And God, we simply ask that your will be done above all things. Help us to submit to your authority, and help us to trust that your plan is always best. Thank you for who you are and how wonderful you are. And thank you for this meeting, God. May everything be accomplished in this meeting that you desire to be accomplished, and may everything that's said and done in this meeting bring glory to your name. We love you, and we thank you for loving us, and it's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Council, you have received the minutes of our December third meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from December third.
So moved, Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Lane.
Second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor, raise your hands. Those opposed, by the same side, and that is so ordered as well. Public comment. Do we have any people, anyone sign up for public comment?
No.
Okay.
I will.
You have to explain where you've been. Next item on our, on our business, agenda dives, a present, we have two presentations, actually. One is a proclamation for Greenwood County Parks and Recreation Use Volleyball. Mr. Codel, if you would be so kind as to introduce your guests and tell us why we're proclaiming them tonight.
Well, the twenty twenty-four eleven twelve U's state champions is a ninety-six volleyball team.
State champions.
State champions. Girls and guys. And the last year, the eleven twelve Greenwood County team won the state, but all these girls are not, were not on the team. They moved up and still keep it as nice and strong. So volleyball's on the increase, definitely, for Greenwood County.
Right.
On that and there. So the girls, come forward, please. Then you can read the.
Congratulations. It's been a pleasure to see you tonight.
And coaches.
Yeah, well, that was part of what I wanted to say as well, too. While it's awesome to have these young ladies up here and their feat that they accomplished, I think also what needs to be recognized, the coaches, Sidney Day and Gracie Timmerman and Meredith Jones.
That's right.
And, and to the parents, you know, personally, I want to say thank you. You know, when it comes to allowing your kids to participate in sports, I don't normally need one of those.
I've been told.
You, you have a choice, and we know there's travel options and lots of places you could take them, but you, you chose to keep your kids here at Greenwood County, in the Parks and Rec. And obviously, I'm a little more proud that they're right here in ninety-six. So with all that being said, the team members, the district opponents that they defeated were Holla, Clemson, Westminster, Pickens. The state opponents were Florence, St. Andrews, and then St. Andrews again. Or is that a second?
We beat them twice.
Yeah, okay, good. Brad looked at me like I read it wrong, so. But just, just thank you. Thank you all for participating, and it's a major accomplishment. And as long as I'm on council, I'll do my best to try to recognize those that have reached that pinnacle. So the team members, Emma Birch, Caitlin Day, Alana Dove, Ruby Gentry, Savannah Gottes, Aubrey Long, Savannah Maggert, and Emily Schumpert. Okay. All right. Whereas on Saturday, November the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the twenty twenty-four twelve U ninety-six All-Star volleyball team won the state championship in Florence, South Carolina, under the leadership of head coach Sidney Day and assistant coaches Gracie Timmerman and Meredith Jones. Whereas the championship team members for the twenty twenty-four twelve U team are Emma Birch, Caitlin Day, Alana Dove, Ruby Gentry, Savannah Gottes, Aubrey Long, Savannah Maggert, and Emily Schumpert. And whereas Greenwood County Parks and Recreation plays in the Western District of the South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association Sports League. And whereas this year's All-Star volleyball team makes Greenwood County Recreation back-to-back state champions, winning the two thousand and thirteen twelve U championship last year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Greenwood County Council does hereby extend their congratulatory accolades to the twenty twenty-four twelve U ninety-six All-Star volleyball team. They wish the team members, coaches, and family members who committed their love and support along the way, continued success through their athletic and educational journeys on this day, the seventeenth of December, two thousand twenty-four.
Has a gift for you as well, aren't you?
Thanks.
All right, girls, so I'm gonna have to hold your shirt with this side facing out for the state championship.
Hey, if parents want to follow up, this would be a great time.
Yeah, any of the parents want to come up? Anyone?
Hey, Daddy, will you listen?
I will.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Mr. Chairman, while, while Damon's coming back around.
Please.
I think this is a great opportunity to say that, I think this is a great opportunity for us to say, due to their yes to the twenty twenty-four capital property sales tax, phase two of Greenwood County Recreation Complex will be coming into play, which includes volleyball courts. So, thank you.
Next item on our agenda, thank you, folks, for coming. You're welcome to stay. We'll be here till about ten, I think. I know. The next item on the presentation is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven honoring the retirement of Dr. Chuck Moats. Mr. Theo Lane, I believe, is in charge of this.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, you gonna take this honor from here, and you gonna stand down with your family? How you gonna handle it? Make him get out.
I'll go.
She's got family.
I'll go stand down with the family.
They came.
That really, that really wasn't a suggestion, Chairman.
That was an order. That was an order.
Yeah.
You gotta come down. Well, I've gotta read this.
Susan, if you will, you just hold it for me.
I'm delighted to have my family. Will you do that?
Up there?
I'm delighted to have my wife, of course, with me, and my daughter Laura Lee, and my granddaughter Meyer Ann.
So without, without further delay, Resolution number twenty twenty-four thirty-seven, County of Greenwood, a resolution recognizing the retirement of Dr. Chuck Moats and his sixteen years of service as Greenwood County Councilman for District Four. Whereas Dr. Chuck Moats was born in Chattanooga, Tennessee, on August twenty-nine, nineteen forty-four. He has been married to Miss Allison for fifty-seven years. He is a father of two children, lost David and Laura, and grandfather of two granddaughters, Madison and Meyer. Whereas Dr. Moats graduated from Inglewood High School in Jacksonville, Florida, he continued his journey in higher education, earning degrees from Florida State University, West Georgia University, Southern Baptist Theological Seminary, and Erskine Seminary. Whereas Dr. Moats is an ordained Baptist minister, retiring from full-time pastoral ministry in two thousand six. During his full-time ministry, Dr. Moats has served Georgia churches in Newman, Mulberry, and Stone Mountain, and completed his pastoral ministry serving churches in Greenwood, South Carolina. Whereas Dr. Moats was elected to the Greenwood County Council representing District Four in two thousand eight, he was elected to chairman of the Greenwood County Council in two thousand twenty, serving out the remainder of the late Steve Brown's term as chairman. Dr. Moats decided not to seek re-relation in two thousand twenty-four after serving sixteen years on county council. Whereas Dr. Moats has always led Greenwood County with a clear moral compass, one that pointed towards improving the lives of all citizens and fairness for those whose voices often struggle to be heard. Dr. Moats has participated in the recruitment of many businesses to our community. However, he has always advocated, not only for the best interest of Greenwood County and the company, but most importantly, for a quote-unquote "living wage" for all of the company's future employees. Whereas Dr. Moats enjoys spending time at the beach with his wife and family, reading, staying healthy by exercising regularly, and following his great Florida State University seminar.
Oh, no.
Be it therefore resolved by the Greenwood County Council of Greenwood, South Carolina, and this meeting duly assembled today. Section one, that Dr. Chuck Moats has made a major impact on Greenwood County during his sixteen years of service. He represented Greenwood County Council, District Four, and the best interest of Greenwood County citizens. Greenwood County Council wishes Dr. Moats many blessings on his retirement and thanks him for his service to the citizens of Greenwood County. Section two, this resolution shall become effective upon enactment by a majority of the members of Greenwood County Council, present and voting, passed and approved this seventeenth day of December, two thousand twenty-four.
So, Council, I need a motion because we're gonna have to vote on this resolution.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Mr. Templeton, a second from Ms. Bishop. So I assume it will be the will of the council to approve this. Please signify by raising your hand.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
You say, will we call that?
Add it. Add it. You gonna take one because you got.
Are we good? I, I would like to know who wrote it because there's some things there that I wonder how you possibly could have known.
You had help.
You had help. But I am grateful to you, and I'll have more to say about that in my district report. But thank you so much for the recognition and for the opportunity to serve with you on this council. We move now to old business. And the first item of old business is Ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, which amends the Greenwood County zoning map so that one parcel of land at two zero eight Emerald Farm Road in Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes its zoning from R-two single-family residential to A-G-one agricultural. Ms. Carroll, do you want to add any more information to this request? This will be third and final reading.
I don't have anything new to add. It's basically a down zoning.
Council, do you have any questions?
Off your motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Allison to approve, second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor, raise your hands, and that is so ordered. It is done. Congratulations. You get your home built, and you have a wonderful life there. The next item, Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, which amends Sections ten point three and figures ten dash twelve and ten dash sixteen of the land use element of the Greenwood City County Comprehensive Plan, two thousand thirty-five. Ms. Carroll, once again.
Thank you.
See, like, we've dealt with this for six years or more.
It feels like it, yes. And we'll be dealing with a comprehensive plan in the next few years again. So this was to clean up some things that the city was mainly concerned about with so much of the land within the city being designated for future land use of high-density residential. So we brought in consultants, and they did a parcel-by-parcel study. This is the revised future land use for the city of Greenwood only. We did clear up some language in the definition section also, and because of the changes that we made, we changed one section of a table that says what is low density, what is moderate or medium density, and what is high density in the city and the county. If you have any specific questions, I'll be glad to address them.
Council, do you have any questions on Ms. Cohen concerning this?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Does the comprehensive plan, the next time the comprehensive plan will be?
We will start the process next year, and in two thousand twenty-five, we need a new plan in place by May of two thousand twenty-seven.
So whatever we approve tonight, we can revisit?
Yes, definitely.
On the next, next year basis.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Council? Is there a motion then that we approve this amending of the ordinance?
Off your motion.
Motion by Mr. Allison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Templeton. Any further questions? All in favor, raise your hands. Those opposed, by the same side, and that is so ordered, and that is third and final reading for this. The next item on your own business is Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty, which dissolves the Springwood subdivision as a special tax district. Ms. Dorn?
Thank you, Chairman and Council. There are no changes since the first reading of this, which was, of course, entitled only. The neighborhood has met and would like to dissolve as a tax district, and I recommend that you approve their request.
Thank you very much. I'll offer your motion. There's a motion by Mr. Pruitt, is there a second? Second by Ms. Griffin. Let me ask you, this is second reading. Does it require a third reading and final reading, which will be held at the January meeting?
Yes, and that's correct. And it'll be a post-hearing at that time.
Yes, okay. Council, understand that? Yes, sir. Okay. If you're in favor of the motion that has been offered, please raise your hand. Those opposed, by the same side. Thank you very much, Ms. Dorn. The next item would be two public hearings. And as we move into the public hearing, as I advised you earlier, I'd like to deal with both of these. We'll enter the public hearing. We will hear the changes or the instructions. I will close then the public hearing, and then we will vote on each of the items that are listed here. So is there a motion that we enter to a time of public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Templeton, second by Mr. Allison. All in favor, raise your hands. We are now in a public hearing. The first item is Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, which authorizes the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenwood County, South Carolina, and an entity known as KPRUS LLC. The project for us is known as Project Simba. Mr. Bateman is here. This is third reading for this ordinance, right, Mr. Bateman?
Yes, sir, it is.
And it is the final reading.
It is, third and final reading.
You have anything you want to say about it?
Yes, sir. And it is third and final reading. We can now disclose that KPR is the company, Project Simba, that this council has considered the first two readings under that code name. KPR stands for Kendall Patient Recovery, and that is parent company of Cardinal Health as they do business here in Greenwood. So Project Simba, as it's been known to us, is a, is expansion at Cardinal Health. This is a, a new twenty-year fee in lieu of tax agreement offer for their thirty million dollar investment commitment and creation of twelve new jobs as a part of that investment.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Bateman. You've heard the explanation if you're here tonight, and you would like to speak in favor of authorizing the execution and delivery of this fee in lieu of tax agreement, please come forward and tell us who you are, where you live, and why you're in favor. I see no one moving forward, so I'll flip the coin and say if you're here tonight and you would like to speak against this ordinance, then please come forward, state your name and where you live, and tell us why you are against it. Then I see no one coming forward. I will now close this portion of the public hearing and move forward to the other item, which is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, which is approving the termination of an inducement agreement, millage rate agreement, and lease agreement related and pertaining to KPRUS LLC. Mr. Bateman, we're enacting one and terminating another.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And your reasoning for bringing these two, considering both of these matters at the same time because they are tied together, council considers this resolution terminate an existing agreement that ends at the end of this year as a part of this old agreement. Property needs to be retitled to the company, and that would be affected through passing of this resolution and the associated documents.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bateman. And if you're here tonight and you would like to speak in favor of terminating this inducement agreement, et cetera, then please come forward, state your name and where you live, and tell us why you're in favor. I see no one moving forward. If you're here tonight and you'd like to speak against approving the termination of this inducement agreement, then you come forward, state your name and where you live, and tell us why you are against it. I see no one coming forward, so I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. I'm going to ask for a motion that we end the public hearing and vote on the ordinance and the resolution. Is there a motion to end public hearings?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pruitt, second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor? And that is so ordered. So Council, the first item we vote on is Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen, which authorizes the execution and the delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement between Greenwood County and KPRUS LLC. Is there a motion that we approve?
Offer to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Templeton. Second. Second by Mr. Lane. Any further questions? All in favor, raise your hands. That is so ordered, and that is third and final reading. The next item we vote on is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, which approves the termination of an inducement agreement agreed to at an earlier date. Is there a motion that we approve the termination of this agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Allison. Second by Mr. Templeton. All in favor, raise your hands, and that is so ordered as well. Thank you very much, Council. We move on now to new business. First is consideration of appointments of members to the Joint Planning Commission. Ms. Carroll, you're up again.
This is to reappoint members that are currently serving on the planning commission. We have one appointment that is to be made, that's the at-large appointment, but we need that from you. And then we have one member in District Five who wishes to not continue at this time for personal reasons. If you have any questions about any of these, all of these people have served very well so far, and I would love to have them continue to serve.
Okay. Okay. I would like to make a motion that we appoint an at-large member. And I would like to nominate Mr. Jim Medford to serve in that capacity. I talked with him today. I think he is willing to do that. And if counsel has no objection, I will entertain a motion that we add him to the list for appointment.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we, I don't know what sequence we need to do this in, but I was informed that Mr. Tripp will not be, Mr. Tripp May will not be able to serve another term. He's on for reappointment, so I'll have to, I think that's my district, is my district. I'll have to find someone for his, to fill his place. But when we vote tonight, we will not be voting for Tripp May's reappointment for District 3, per his request. He has decided that he will not be available.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Allison. Again, I go back to appointing or nominating whatever is appropriate here, Mr. Medford, to fill this vacancy at large appointment.
I give you a motion to accept that appointment.
There's a motion to accept the appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Templeton. The manager wants to weigh in, I can tell.
I wasn't weighing, Mr. Chairman, unless you weigh in for justice. Maybe you open up the floor for other nominations for your clothes.
That'll be fine. Are there other nominations for this position? I see none.
I did have one comment on that one.
Okay.
Just Mr., with everything that Mr. Medford is involved in, does he really feel like he is able to take this on as well?
He spoke to me directly today and assured me that if we needed him, he would serve. I didn't question his willingness. I assumed it was forthcoming of his own free will, that no one was forcing him, but whatever. Anyway, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Medford at the at-large vacancy.
Chairman, can I? Create a comfort.
Yes, sir.
Since the sale of Stony Point Dock Course, Mr. Medford is really, he, he holds a, a private consulting company where sometimes he works with, helping bring businesses to Greenwood. But he's not going to be involved, based on the conversations I've had with him, Jalen. He's not going to be involved in any more day-to-day operations stuff. So he probably now is about as close to really being retired as he's ever been. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. If I may add on to that, Mr. Medford, of course, has been involved in real estate and zoning and other issues, and he is very well-versed in that area. And I think he'd be a valuable member for the, the planning commission. And personally, this is my own personal view, that with the advent of Old Eight group out there and expanding Stony Point and creating literally a new community, if you, if you will, I think he'd be invaluable and the input and insight that he would have as well.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure I know we're voting on, we're voting on everybody except Tripp May.
Jeff, yeah, no, not District 5. I've got it.
You've got to bring us one back to District 5 for Janice Coffey, correct? But everybody we see there, plus Mr. Medford, minus.
No. Mr. Chairman, I believe that was the motion, including the motion for Messers.
Over the hour. Right, it's the at-large.
That's why I have to go there.
Thank you.
That's why I have to go there.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Medford to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the, at, for the at-large appointment. All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, by the same side. There's one proposition. Now we can vote on the slate, less Tripp May and Janice Coffey.
To District 5.
I'll offer your motion to approve. All right, there's a motion that we approve, those remaining. Second by Ms. Bishop. A motion by Mr. Templeton. Any questions? Those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, and that is so ordered. Thank you. Next item is consideration of appointment, members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, this is a joint board as well, and the two reappointments that we have for the county at this time in District 3, Tina Escalona, and District 4 is Richard Thomason.
And they both have agreed to serve?
They both have agreed to serve.
Okay. You have any questions, counsel?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah, Richard Thomason definitely wants to be reappointed, but I want to correct the fact that he is in District 5.
Oh, yes.
You know, I thought that was true when I.
And Carroll, Tina Escalona resides in District 7.
Okay, we have those corrections. Mr. 7 is representing. Is there a motion that we appoint?
Motion to approve.
The next item, which is our capital project sales tax quarterly update. Mr. Skinner is here, anxious to tell us all about.
Yes, thank you.
What's happening?
Chairman and counsel, quick update here. Run through it real quick, and then at the end, let's see, we spent close to $50 million of that on the 24 projects that we're currently on, the 27 at the end. These numbers, on a closer look, are on the Greenwood County website under the 2016 CPST headed, as well as the Department of Revenue Corps report, which has been sent in for this quarter. You can see it all on our, on the Greenwood County website. This quarter's revenue will fund the Railroad Historical Center, so that'll be fully funded at $1.2 million. The city platform fire truck at $1.4 million, and partially fund the Harris Landing water lines. I don't understand about that. The rest of that money will expect to come in next quarter, and then the additional funds that council approved for the project back in May.
Can I, can I come here?
Sure, yeah, please.
Just real quick on the project number 27, there's been a lot of topic and conversation about that. And the manager and myself have talked with CPW. We've, we've talked with Jeff Meredith, and we have scheduled a public meeting for Tuesday, January 14th, at 6 o'clock at Lakeview Baptist Church, to go over the details of this and to explain, you know, the water lines, where they're going, and, and the scope of the project. So I know that's been asked about a lot, whether it's social media or whatever, but we're trying to be proactive on this, and we want to get the word out about this meeting.
Where is the Lakeview Baptist Church?
Going out towards Harris Landing, Old Orange Road.
It's on the left, I believe.
Correct. Left, the left-hand side.
Okay.
5,009 Old Orange Road.
He shows no time, Dan.
Oh, I apologize. 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock. To discuss the water line expansion in that community. Sorry, Josh.
Sorry, bro.
Continue.
Just go through the, the current, the active projects and order the list on the ballot. Gray Street Parks, our final park project, which the city of Greenwood Council approved this final plan about a month ago. Davis and Floyd did the design, Sauson Construction. Will do the construction work, which is expected to start in January of 2025, next month. The final plan includes, you see, the bike track, also called pump track, restroom, pavilion, three separate playground areas, base groups, parking lot in the center, two pickleball courts, and a, this is a water fountain-type feature. It's not in the current budget, but the grading is. That's kind of a future, future item. And then a, a trail that connects this part of the park to the rest of the park. And this is, so this is Gray Street, and this is the fire station on Gray Street, if you're trying to get your, your bearings.
Where's the bypass?
Bypass would be right up here. This is the intersection. So long time coming. Excited to see it breaking around next month.
Josh, is, if I may ask, is the site prep work for the water feature area, is that in the budget this time?
Yes.
So the site prep we'll be doing just won't be building yet?
Right, right, right.
Josh, I was going to ask, are there any walking trails within the wooded area surrounding this? Any plans for that there?
There are tra, there are currently trails up on this hill in these woods. Right now, of course, this.
And there's one around the lake.
Right, and this trail here will connect to those current trails.
Okay.
There's also a little trail, you can't see it, there's a little trail, supposed to be a bike kind of trail that runs from here around the, the bike track.
Okay.
I gotta put an age limit on that bike trail.
Right, yeah. Of course, this is all being built on the remains of the old water, which was torn down and put in the underground tank. So that's kind of a, kind of a neat thing. The bike and pedestrian trails, we're still, still working on some of the trails at Mill Village. We added some fencing at Duncan and Merriman Avenue to keep people from dumping on the side of the trail. Some would still dump a dresser and mattress over the fence, but I'm sure they'll keep working on it. I think the next step is some removable bollards in the middle to keep people from driving through. Also part of bike and pedestrian trails, the Safe Streets for All Grant, which council approved in September. That's $160,000, $1.6 million. But we had the kickoff meeting in last month. Recently, we had a good, good attendance. SEDT was there, city representatives were there, the council on the left, Kathy Mello was there. Eden Hunt went over kind of the process and what's going on. And, and just to be clear, so everybody knows that why this is part of the bike and pedestrian trails. When we applied for the grant, we specifically said that connectivity of existing bicycle and pedestrian trails will be a focus of the, what's that last word?
Concern.
Concern, focus of concern. So, and, and the main point is to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety in Greenwood. So our engineers and the federal highway administration know that that's what we're focused on. We still have to do these county-wide safety audits, look at all the numbers. Some of the, some of the good numbers from, from the data collection so far, not good numbers, but good if you're looking for a grant, not good for, for Greenwood County. But a, a large number of injuries and fatalities on a small percentage of roads, and 16 of those were pedestrian or bicyclists. There is some interviews, there's some interviews with stakeholders beforehand and kind of get an idea of where some of the safety issues were. You see most of the concern areas, the high-injury areas, are located around the city of Greenwood, around the bypass, Montague, Cambridge Avenue. You see sort of the hotspot map here, where you see the high-injury networks around the bypass and sort of the South Greenwood area. But if you look at, if you look at the numbers from the stakeholder interviews, Area Concern 1, 2, and 3 are located right around some of our trails. This is South Greenwood, or here it is trail, runs across Ishwood Avenue. This is the bypass in Grace, where we have West Cambridge Trail that runs into the bypass at the Waffle House. And of course, number 6 is Main Street, a main area of concern for, city of Greenwood is connecting the West Cambridge Trail to the Harris Trail. So it, it works out well where all the, the, the high injuries and areas of concern will fall right around the bike, the bike and pedestrian trail network. Still, where studies to do, Eden Hunt, would like to, where they want to put up a website, they'd like to link it to the county website for public to put the, where all of the county put in input of where they'd like to see, where they have safety concerns, couple more public meetings. And then we'll return the county council with three to five recommendations for safety improvement projects. So that, that project is just being started. Project number four is the Dig in the Maze site. The design bill contract was signed with Tower Destruction out of Columbia. They had the, the groundbreaking back in November. Started working on the foundation already. I believe the concrete was poured today. So they're hoping to have the building, the addition up and running by next spring, early summer. And Glean's, Glean's is paying about $250,000 of the contract, and the capital product sales tax is paying the other $550,000, so good partnership there. Fire Service Master Plan, the Public Safety Training Center. We've seen some preliminary master plans of two different sites. Haven't made the final decision on the site yet, but that should be coming very soon, in the next month or so, I think. Right now, we have $4 million available for the 2016 capital product sales tax, and 2024 capital product sales tax, that's $15.2 billion allocated to this training center. So looking at burn buildings, possible driving course, a couple buildings for classes, maybe a shooting range, so. The big one right now is the Greenwood County Recreation Complex. They are coming into the final stretch. We've been driven by there the past two days. Scott Paving has been out milling the old tennis, the old parking lot by the tennis courts. So they'll get a fresh coat of asphalt and a new entrance right here onto the bypass. So we will not be using the fire station, EMS station entrance, I have its own entrance. Let's see, concrete paths continue to go down to connect all the areas of park. You see some landscaping starting to go in. Paramore Construction, also out of Greenwood, is doing curb cuts and parking lot on the large lot at the other end of the park, in front of the grass fields. You see the strip here, this will be ADA parking, crosswalk across here to connect to the artificial turf fields. Concrete, basketball court was poured yesterday. Close to the same spot, slightly different orientation, but same size. So that's good to finally get, get in. The brackets were finally in for the fencing around the playgrounds. The actual fencing is going up now, so just a post. There's some landscaping that's going in, so. Looks a lot better now that the grass has popped up. Now we've got some rain. Some aerial shots that just came in. You can see the side soccer field here through the artificial turf fields, which are all college-sized soccer fields. They've all been widened to the correct length. You can see the pass, the sidewalk's also at the finish up. There will be a sidewalk coming down here, going all the way around, a bleacher pad here, and basically circling and running on, connecting all that together. From the backside, you see the adult fitness area that was put in a few months ago. They're working on some drainage, a little French drain around that to help the water run off. The batting cage netting was just installed last week, so that's, that's finally complete. We still have fencing to go in around this entrance, decorative fencing. Of course, we'll have decorative fencing, brick columns and black aluminum going all along the front of the complex with bangos behind it. So it'll look real nice in the next few months as that's finished up. We did find a little issue here with some unsuitable soil, so that'll have to be dug out about two feet to add some crush around it. Still waiting on the price on that, but that's our new entrance for the tennis, for the tennis and playground area. And this will be, this fire station cut through will be demoed. So you can't cut through. The fire station will have its own access. Any questions about the Willbanks project before we move on? So yeah, final steps are the fencing around the front, signage, and deep wider. Storm monitor system in Area 96. We had one bid come in back in August. It was about $400,000 over. We've been value engineering at Davis and Floyd for the past couple of months. The bid was with Palmetto Site Destruction out of Greenwood. That's Scott Deuce. Met with Scott today and, and the. Met with Scott today and, and the mayor of ninety-six, and walked the site. I think, I think we got a solution to get the number, uh, under budget, um, and if he can finalize that, he hopes to start at the end of January or February, actually, uh, relining some of the pipe, removing some of the old pipe and replacing that, uh, drainage line that runs from the playground in ninety-six, our park, down to, uh, Witten Avenue. Coast Fair College, uh, group of volunteers have been doing a great job building the restroom facilities here, uh, two ADA restrooms and a storage unit here, you can see on the backside. Um, it's a group of woodworkers, mostly, most of them with Wesley Commons. Last summer they built a gazebo, uh, and Dr. Hal Taylor, uh, turned this little fennel here and then he also turned the fennel to match to put on the cool up on the bathroom, which I thought was a neat touch to tie the two buildings together. Um, there's a, there's a group of the, uh, volunteers that have, so far, they spent twenty thousand dollars and, you know, probably be a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand of a project if we get it out, so they're doing a great job. Chuck Foss has been the, uh, sort of project manager, and they've gotten a lot of help, a lot of discounts from, uh, some of those companies down at the bottom there. Detention Center renovations, uh, the epoxy flooring that council approved, uh, we helped start that in January. Uh, they have ordered some new aluminum shower doors to help get the showers off, up to code, uh, for the Department of Corrections. And we're also reviewing some, uh, epoxy coating to cover the old tile in the showers. And that is mostly, um, Major Cat Tucker, uh, trying to get the detention center up to the Department of Corrections standards. Reinvention in the Art Center, um, just came down and did the initial measurements again in November, this is some of the drawings. Um, this is the roof line, they also did some asbestos testing, they found a little bit of asbestos in some of the flashing and sealant. Uh, nothing, nothing too major, they say. Uh, they had, they had the design specs, we put that up after the bid, um, January, February. Railroad Historical Center, one point two million, uh, these are the, um, sort of conceptual designs that DB3 gave to the Railroad Historical Center. They were not a fan of the, of this, um, they're, they've asked me to lower the roof line, add some dormers, and make it look more like the original Train Depot that was on Main Street. Um, there's the floor plan, they do, the floor plan is pretty close. You have your, your entrance area, your, uh, display area, and then your outdoor seating area for events. Little catering kitchen, that's a restroom, so, um, that project's due before. Like I said, next quarter's revenue will go towards the Harris Land and Water Lines and, uh, also part of the Highway twenty-five, five south part lines. And that should, uh, that should be the last two projects on the list. Um, and that leaves us into the watershed study. Okay, all right, any questions about the, uh, the other?
Great report, Josh.
Good report. Okay.
Council, you have any questions, any comments? Okay, you're moving to the Walpert, uh, watershed study?
Watershed study, that's right.
Yeah, we have consideration of areas of concern. Anyone want to amend the contract? You're requesting us to amend the contract?
Yes, the committee is requesting that as well.
Tell us why.
Okay, so, I'll try my best, um, I was hoping Rossi or Brett could be here tonight, but, um, they were tied up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best here. Uh, there is a watershed study committee, Rossi, uh, Carol Coleman, Carson, Derek Oliver, Brett Templeton, Abby, uh, Julie Wilk and Austin Lathan are on that from the city. Uh, they began, uh, Walpert Engineering began the study, uh, in February, it's supposed to be about a one-year study, so they're, they're close to wrapping it up. Uh, in March, we had public meetings at the Art Center, the couple went much time, table attended by Gatewood and Chiquipin residents. Uh, they gave their areas of concern, after that, Walpert took surveys, GIS sites, historical data to put together models and maps of where, uh, we might have some flooding issues. So their initial studies had two tiers of flooding issues, um, twenty-one total. Uh, they split it into tier one, which are sort of major flooding issues where roads are covered for extended period of time. And tier two, you have, uh, still have flooding issues, not as major, roads aren't, um, in, impassable for a long length of time. Uh, part of the contract is, uh, the committee was supposed to select seven areas to, uh, do an alternative analysis on. So the committee decided, um, you know, since they're eight in tier one, tier one are major issues, let's go with the top seven. Jaboshia Drive was left out because most of the mobile homes that were in the floodplain have already been moved out of the floodplain. So that area's kind of fixed itself, but, um, we told Wal- Wal- Walpert to move forward with these top seven areas and give us more analysis. And just to give you an idea of what they showed us at this first meeting with the tier one and tier two. So this is Brookfield Drive, you know, you can see during, uh, some of the major flooding events, uh, roads covered. Uh, they give us these graph lines of a hundred-year floodplain, twenty-five-year flood, uh, a hundred-year storm event, twenty-five, ten. Uh, you see how, and this is the road level, and you can see how high the water will come up the road. And then you have, uh, tier two event, like, uh, Emerald Road at the bypass, you have a little bit of water coming to the road, uh, but it's not for, and it's in the period of time. So, you know, we're trying to move forward with these seven, um, they will further model it, they came back to us last month, um, with sort of some more in, in-depth analysis of those seven areas. Uh, things like, things that we could actually do to improve the problems, things like lowering Lake Chiquipin, uh, before expected rainfall, this could be with manual gates or automatic gates. Um, they went as far as building, you know, we could build a new dam across the lake of Greenwood, uh, twenty-two foot, uh, twenty-two foot tall, four hundred foot long dam. Obviously, that's, that's very expensive and, and time-consuming, but that is, that is one of the options they put forward. Uh, on Sample Road, they talked about, you know, you could possibly add box culverts, uh, things like that. Um, uh, at Fox Hollow, uh, apartments on Hall to Limer, they gave us an option of, you know, digging out, widening the stream channel eighty foot, which would be extremely expensive and, you know, DOT would have to build a new bridge over the channel. Uh, they also gave the option of possibly buying out the apartments that, uh, Fox Hollow next to Hall to Limer because they've been flooded, uh, I think, two or three times in the past twenty years. Um, Walpert thought that'd be a good candidate for FEMA funding for potential buyouts. So, uh, all in all, Walpert gave us, uh, thirteen alternative analysis for these flooding issues. And we're supposed to pick our top four to move forward with, with in, for in-depth studies, uh, cost estimates, construction design. Walpert gave us these, this list, and the ones with stars next to them have emergency access concerns. And the ones in red were Walpert's recommendations, uh, to move forward with. So the committee met, we discussed it, uh, the committee recommends moving forward with, um, lowering the lakes and you can communicate with the four storm events, looking at that option. Upgrading the culverts at, at Brookfield Drive, running an access drive to Brookfield Drive for emergency access. Uh, a alternate access road, Drive Branch Court, which is on Sample Branch Creek, and the potential buyouts of the Fox Hollow apartments. And, uh, speaking with county engineer Brett Templeton today, he wanted me to make sure that I included with the Drive Branch Court that I'd upgrade Colbert at Sample Road, kind of, they kind of go together, um, they're in the same area. So really, those would be the same project moving forward. Now, there's a lot, it is, it's kind of complicated. Uh, we started with one point seven million, the current contract with, uh, Walpert is two hundred and seventy thousand, so we have one point four million remain. We're supposed to move forward with four potential projects to look at.
So what are you asking for us, of us tonight?
We're asking for, uh, uh, I guess council's blessing to move forward with, uh, these four recommendations. Uh, three and five will be combined. And then, in addition, separate than that, the committee also asked how much it would cost for Walpert to, uh, further, further analyze the tier two uh, flooding issues, they gave us a price for around thirty-five thousand. Um, if council agrees on that, we will hash out a, an actual contract and bring it back to council, but, uh, the committee did recommend moving forward with the, uh, thirty-five thousand amendment.
To the contract.
For tier two, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel, you've heard this request, uh, any comments or questions? If you're-
I have a question. I have a question. Before I ask Carson a question, let me ask Josh a question. Did you say that Brookfield Drive was private road?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Carson, does that present a problem with it being a private road?
One of the reasons that they identified Brookfield Drive as a recommendation to engineers is because they saw an emergency access, emergency services access nexus. If you've ever been there, you know that you can't, you can't go over Brookfield and get to the back of Gatewood, the, the people who live up there. So unless that is fixed, or there's actually the potential for, um, building an access road, that's one of the other things that you, that you can see, number two. Um, it, it's the emergency access, and since we are the provider of those services, we see that there's a public, um, there's a public purpose for that. That's a great question, but that's how we got there.
And that's a great answer, that's what I needed to know, you're great, thank you.
Counsel, anyone else have a question? If not, is there a motion that we approve this requested amendment, increasing the cost some thirty-five thousand dollars?
I'll give you most of the approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Templeton.
I'll second that, Chair.
Seconded by Ms. Colain, any other comments?
I just say, I know the folks that live in, in Fox Hollow have had a number of issues.
Yeah, thanks.
And, and, um, over the years, so, and I think some of them are here tonight, I know I seen Jimmy.
Okay.
Waging, okay, thank you.
Counsel, if you're ready to vote, all in favor of the motion to grant the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed by the same side? You got thirty-five K?
Yes, sir.
Bend it wisely.
Merry Christmas.
Now, the, the four recommendations are, you all okay with moving forward with those?
Anything to give, so really?
Okay, all right.
Good.
I will let them know, thank y'all.
Next item is consideration of the extension of county manager's current contract through January seventh, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Penny, would you please lead us through this?
Our county manager's contract expires on December thirty-first of this year. Um, the law favors adoption of a new contract at the start of the new council term, which is right around the corner from that date. Uh, so I would recommend that you extend the county manager's current contract until January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and take up consideration of a new contract for our county manager on that same day at the meeting.
Okay, Counsel, you've heard the request to extend, is there a motion?
Some, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Templeton, seconded by Ms. Griffin, any questions or comments? All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed by the same side, and that is the order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penny. Next item is a monthly update from our treasurer's department, Dr. Stephanie Dorn.
Thank you, Dr. Dorn.
Thank you, Chairman and Council. Um, I am will be much more than than Josh.
Hallelujah.
Um, but Helene kind of, um, interrupted our schedule a little bit and, um, in addition to some changes in staff, so we are at your next meeting having that presentation, um, by the audit firm unless they are unable to attend. I haven't, haven't worried about that at this point, I've just been trying to get the report finished. Uh, but there have been no issues reported to me by our audit team. Uh, we have started making deposits at our new central depository with South State Bank, and we hope to have all of our activities transition during the month of January. Uh, the general fund is what we normally look at, uh, revenues are way less than expenditures, but that's normal. Um, property taxes are starting to come in, they are a little bit behind pace, uh, of what we normally see. I believe that that is in part, again, due to Helene, um, people have had unexpected expenses and may have normally paid their taxes early and they probably postponed it a little bit due to that. Uh, but not necessarily a concern at this point. Um, I would also just kind of make you aware that, um, the law allows for anyone that had damage to their home, whether it was partial damage or complete damage, to come in and have their property reassessed, um, for this property tax bill. And it would go back to the normal value, um, hopefully next year if they have been able to get the repairs completed. Uh, so we are having, we are seeing a lot of bills changing, um, and being reduced for that, which, um, is of course a good thing for our citizens to have a little bit of relief on the property tax bill when they're dealing, uh, with all of these damages and so forth down here.
Is that something we put out, uh, I hate to say it, that's the first time I've heard that, so.
Me too.
Um, the-
Is that something we can put out?
If they, if they, if they've been in, um, I know the assessor's office, um, made some, some ground with that when they, when, when they were doing their damage assessments, they were making people aware of it. Um, there have been people coming into their permanent office, um, you know, we're making people aware when they, when we can, um, if, if they, if they do come in. I, I mean, I'm sure we can put it out on social media, it's not gonna reach everybody, though.
I think, well, we got Renee here, so, Abby, I think we need to get that out as much as possible because any relief we can provide our citizens due to this turbulent year we just had would be, um, appreciated.
And I, I, it is an important point, that is a function of the assessor's office, so anybody that, um, has had damage in their home that would need to go to the assessor's office.
Let me ask one question, just to make sure I understand, so, many homes obviously are damaged. So, if your home was damaged, but you've already repaired it, does that factor in?
No, sir, if you're, if you've repaired it, you would not, you would not necessar- it, it depends on when you go in and appeal it. So if I, if my home is still, if, if my home was damaged on October fifteenth when I received my property tax bill, then I would have gone into the assessor's office and it would have been reduced. I could have it fixed as of today, and I would still have that reduced bill.
But can they do it retroactively? What I'm asking is, storm comes, what, September twenty-sixth, the terrace portion of the house down. They get their bill, their tax bill, they didn't know to go in and ask to adjust it. They presumably may be paid it, awaiting to pay it, but they've already repaired the house.
That's a necessary question, I, I can't answer that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's all right.
Anything else on that?
No, I'm just thinking we need to get, I was like, assist get that word out.
Okay. Um, hospitality tax collections, uh, we're up about seven percent. This is collections of June through October, I think you probably know that even we have, even though we had a little bit of storm, we had a lot of people eaten out in October because it couldn't, um, had no power at home. And, um, in addition to that, you see local accommodations taxes are about fourteen percent higher, um, which is a tremendous growth, but again, we have a lot of people, had a lot of people in hotels and, um, during the month of October. I wouldn't be surprised to see that kind of be high again in November, when those numbers come in. Our next capital project sales tax quarterly payment will be received in January. And so hopefully, your second meeting in January, I'll have that information as we get close to closing that particular tax out. Our transportation is still doing a good job. We did have a decline of about eight trips, but that's not a whole lot. And our building permits, we continue to see significant growth, especially in residential permit values. New construction dominates that. Commercial permit values are significantly less than this last year. We just have not had any big projects come through that were commercial. Happy to answer any questions if you might.
Counsel, do you have questions, Ms. Dorn?
Actually, this probably goes more towards the permit, the software they were working on that we discussed in the meeting with myself and Mr. Allison. Do you know where that's, how that's coming?
Yeah, they have a March, target date in March. But that's, that's the day they have right now. They're making good progress.
All right. That's still on the schedule. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorn. Appreciate it. Next item is report regarding the Greenwood Together Strategic Plan, September 2024, and a request for funding, Ms. Trentsey Williams. Welcome, Ms. Williams. Good to have you.
Thank you.
Apologize for it being so long.
Ooh, bless y'all. Glad I only have to do this every once in a while. But I'm glad of Greenwood Together. Thank you for your support since the formation of Greenwood Together. Over the last year, the five core entities, which are the City of Greenwood, Discover Greenwood, the Chamber, Uptown Greenwood, and Greenwood County, have worked alongside our community stakeholders to discuss our next steps for Greenwood Together. You should have received in your packet our Economic Development Strategic Plan for Greenwood Together. That is a plan we've been working on over the last year. We are really proud of the product before you. Our request for funding is to move to the next stage, which is moving this plan from the paper into the action phase. A SWAT analysis was provided on page 26 of the plan, which outlined our next steps. Communities thrive off of three key elements: place, people, and business. Those are the three focus areas within this plan. One of the first items within this plan is for us to hire a strategy coordinator to convene our partners to address those three core areas. This position will not only work with our five core partners of Greenwood Together, but many other community stakeholders, which includes the business community, nonprofits, educational partners, and more. This position will convene these partners into those three focus areas to identify our shared priorities that represent a series of collaborative interventions, which can more quickly bring about success through our collaborative efforts. For example, the Workforce Initiative will bring together our education partners, Greenwood Promise, and other entities focused on career readiness, talent attraction, and retention. Some of the initiatives will be identifying key factors to attract and retain our young, talented professionals to this area. This may include relocation incentives, more young professional mentoring groups, or additional apprenticeship programming. The strategy coordinator will convene all of the partners to the table to tackle these initiatives. Some of the work of the position will be also researching communities with successful initiatives and bringing those findings to those three committees. Overall, we believe this plan is strong, and over the next several years, we will work to meet the objectives outlined within the plan. Are there any questions regarding the Contract for Services Agreement or the Economic Development Plan?
Counsel, do you have questions, Ms. Williams? I briefly read your packet, the packet material today.
Yes.
Are there any milestones, any benchmarks along the way where you can see if you're achieving the goals that you set for?
Once we hire the strategy coordinator and we get those three committees in place, then that's when we'll start tackling where are those key priorities that we need to address, and then establishing those benchmarks.
Okay. Who will the strategy coordinator report to?
They will report to me.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Any comments?
Just that this was the, kind of the way we wanted to go. It was this, the path we chose. So I think it's, I think we're, this is a good start.
We're still moving forward anyway.
I think it's a good start.
We have a plan. That's the plan. Start has one.
And agenda indicates you have a request for funding.
Yes, you should have, as well as received our Contract for Services Agreement that is before you. The request for funding is a little over 140,000. It's 140,656.58 cents is the total request for funding.
And approving this, we would be approving that funding?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, is there a motion? We approve the request for funding for this project? Yes, ma'am.
May. The, the funding comes in the next resolution.
Oh, okay.
You could approve the contracts if I wanted to.
Okay. Do you want to approve that?
I'll offer your most to approve the contract, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to approve the contract? Is there a second? Ms. Griffin, is there a second?
All right.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. To approve the contract. Now, let's, now let's talk about paying for it.
Chairman and Council, if you recall, it's been several years ago, believe it or not, that we received a significant amount of funds through the American Recovery Act and Rescue Plan Act, I'm sorry. And it had a requirement that we obligate all of our funds by December 31st of this year. And part of that funding initially authorized or planned for included the, the plan for the strategic efforts that Trentsey just spoke to you about. And we awarded 100,000 first year. It wasn't all spent. We pushed it forward and allocated a second 100,000 for this kind of calendar year of 2024. And then we, we intended to allocate that last 100,000 hopefully in the coming year. And so we still have 40,656 dollars that remained from last year's resolution that hadn't been spent. The primary, what we were paying for initially was some of the website and then some of the development for the strategic plan. As Trentsey and I spoke the other week, it didn't make sense to request further funds until she was ready to move forward with a specific position. The way that the grant works is we can't fund a position if somebody's not in it on December 31st, which is why we have the contract written as it is. We're, we will actually pay Greenwood Community and Richmond Foundation for the services of implementing the strategic plan. Additionally, part of this resolution includes where we had projects that you all authorized two years ago that either came in less than we expected or haven't been spent. One of these was some touchless kiosk in the tax office. We've kind of gone a different direction in the tax office. And then with the future renovations of the administrative building, the addition of the drive-through, we just felt like it was best to kind of stop where we worked with that. Additionally, we, you all authorized some hiring incentives for the detention, detention center, and some of those have not been spent. And these function the same way. We have to have a person in the job that those funds are allocated to by December 31st. So what we're asking is that those remaining funds be reallocated to the administrative building and specifically for the drive-through. If you recall, the, the target of the funds initially were to be things that addressed the COVID pandemic. And so by having that drive-through, that keeps down face-to-face interactions. And so that's, that's why we're being specific that that is what this is for. So the exact of what we're asking for dollar-wise is the 140,656.58 be allocated for the contract for the workforce development, the implementation of that strategic plan, and the reallocation of 52,740.22 to the construction costs of the drive-through. Now, I want you all to make sure you pay attention in section two, that it also says, plus any additional previously allocated but unused funds through December 31st, 2026. So if we, so we currently have some positions in EMS and detention that are still being funded by those hiring incentives. If those employees were to leave us, then that leaves money on the table. This allows us to take that money and apply it towards the drive-through.
But only that money?
Right, only that money, only this money that's already allocated. If for some reason we became unsatisfied with the services of the implementation of the, of the strategic plan that the Chamber isn't going to implement, and you all said, we don't want to fund it anymore, we would be able to take those funds and again, apply it to the drive-through. I did not want to have to come back to you every time an employee left, left the detention center or EMS, that, that happens every day. But I didn't want to have to keep coming back to you for 2,500 here, 5,000 here. I thought it would be easier just to say, we want to go ahead and reallocate that toward the drive-through because the way the, the grant works, the ARPA funds work, we can reallocate it to any projects on the books as of December 31st. We can't allocate it to anything. And the drive-through is, is really the only thing that would be left with an open balance that we could apply those funds to. Obviously, we wouldn't reallocate Trentsey's money. That would be a decision that you all can do, and I'm not saying anything bad about that. I, I feel sure that that will happen on this deal. And that is an example, that if council decided at some point that wasn't, arrangement wasn't working out, the funds could be reallocated to an open project. I know that was a lot. Any questions?
This is all ARPA money.
This is all ARPA money.
So, Counsel, we're being asked to.
I'll offer your most, Mr. Chairman.
Just whatever.
Yeah, whatever you fix and say. She's, she's explained it pretty well.
Okay. There's a motion that we reallocate the funds according to Mrs. Dorn's explanation. Is there a second?
I see.
There's a second by Ms. Bishop. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your hands. Those opposed by the same side.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right on. Don't do what we hear attempt. Resolution 2024-Nash 40, authorizing an amendment to the master agreement governing the Greenwood Newbury Industrial Park to expand its boundaries to include real property located in Greenwood County that pertain to KPR US LLC. Another KPR deal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this resolution puts the Cardinal Health property into the multi-county industrial park and allows us to extend the 20-year agreement, the tax agreement that you voted to pass earlier, putting in ordinance from your public.
Right. I'll offer your motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion to do the expansion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allison. All in favor, raise your hands. Hallelujah. Next and final item is consideration of marketing right and option agreement by, between L.B. Adams Jr. and Margaret W. Adams in Greenwood County.
Mr. Chairman, the county has previously had a option right and marketing agreement with, with Mr. and Mrs. Adams for their property in 96, but that was for 187 acres of that tax parcel. We are expanding the boundaries of that industrial park with the Adams to 432 acres. That is reflected in the option that is in your, that was in your packets. However, there have been some final changes made to the option agreement allowing for lots within the industrial park to be subdivided, as opposed to purchase of the entire park that it still allows for. And that is in the printed copy of the option agreement that was placed at your desk. So we would ask for your, your vote on this option to approve it as amended, allowing for the subdivision of lots.
This one is amended?
Yes, sir. That one in front of you is amended, has that subdivision language and exhibits at the end of it showing where those lot lines could, could be drawn.
I'm going to speak along too. This is my district, and this was my baby with Mr. Bateman because this offers more land opportunity around the old Sloan and Adams plant property for us to be able to market for hopefully industrial and commercial recruitment. I offer you a motion to accept this.
Marking a grant. Okay. We have a motion of Mr. Freud. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allison. Any conversations about that? You ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hands. Those opposed by the same side, and that is so ordered. Thank you very much, Mr. Bateman.
Thank you.
We now move to pending items, and I don't believe we have any pending items. After tonight, we couldn't possibly have anything pending. We've covered the waterfront. Next item is district reports. District one, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is well in District one, but I would like to recognize Abby on her graduation from Lady University, with her MBA. And last night, I was able to see Ms. Betty Boz receive her proclamation for the City Ward III for her 21 years of service. And also my classmate, Reverend Anna Edwards, who was one primary City Ward III. So I was able to do that. And also on tonight, I want to definitely congratulate Dr. Moze on his leadership and guidance here on county councils since I've been here these two years. And we wish you the best on your new endeavor. I also like to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas and a very, very, very prosperous new year. So ends my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. Appreciate your words. Allison, District two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is well in District two. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. It is here, whether you're ready for it or not. I also want to say thanks to Reverend Moze for his service to our community, to this council, and the way he has served. When I first came on council, I never dreamed that he and I would end up becoming as close of friends as we are. We started off a little rough from the beginning. But I, I learned real quick that he, his heart was in the right place and he cared about the people. Of Greenwood, and so do I, so we, we have become very, very close friends, and I appreciate you. Thank you for your leadership, and you have made a great chairman.
Thank you.
It's been a privilege to serve with you, sir. So thank you, and God bless you, you and your wife and your family as you step into your next chapter.
Thank you.
God bless. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very high. Thank you, sir. District three, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everybody for coming tonight. Thank you for the presentation for the children. That was good. I always enjoy, you know, you bragging Dame about 96. But I'm so proud of them. And I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for helping me transition into this role. And we, we started kind of rocky too, but, but. One thing that I love about you is that I could talk to you. I could talk to you. We, we, I mean, had much respect for one another. And a lot of leaders don't know how to respect one another. And that meant a lot to me because we, I mean, we've had some wonderful conversations, and you've listened to me, and that means a lot to me. When people listen to me, it means a lot to me because I listen to them. And so I want to thank you for all that you've done. I thank you for leading the way that you have. Anytime you give a speech, I say, oh, exclamation point. Because he can really. Because he can really give a speech. So I am so thankful that I've been able to serve with you and, and be beside you and, and help you sometimes.
Many times.
But it has been truly a pleasure, and I pray that God continues to bless you in all that you do. Um, everybody, please have a Merry Christmas. Please enjoy your families, and remember that Jesus is the reason for the season, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
District five, Ms. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank Reverend Hinson for coming out and delivering our invocation today. Uh, thank you to the, the, the children and parents and coaches for the twelve U volleyball team. Think it's important to recognize our, our students, our constituents. Um, like I said, they, they do have a choice, and, um, that just bolsters what, um, our Parks and Rec folks are doing and, and sends a strong message. Um, reminder about the meeting with the Harris Landing folks for the water line support scheduled on January fourteenth. Uh, we'd love to get that word out. Um, also, I've received a lot of phone calls about, um, debris removal, and just kind of wanted to reiterate that we do not have a schedule for that, but, um, um, Abby and Rob Russian have said that they are going to put out a video and remind people that it is still being worked on, and we've been told hopefully by the end of January, so please continue to be patient. Uh, but there is no published schedule. Um, I would encourage everyone during this season to get out and go to an event, a Christmas parade. The one in ninety-six was awesome, um, uh, fourteenth, and, um, lit up the town. Real proud of that. And, uh, a singing church event or whatever. Um, and before I end on my Bible verse, Dr. Moats, also, I'd like to say thank you for your leadership and guidance. I met with you when I was first elected, and we discussed things, but, um, even more than just your service on council, the fact that you always asked how I was doing and how Tracy was doing, that means the world to me personally. I appreciate that. I wish you the best. Uh, gonna miss sitting next to you and joking with you, but, um, wish you all the best, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Luke two, nine through twelve says, "An angel of the Lord appeared to them, and glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were terrified. But the angel said to them, 'Do not be afraid. I bring you good news that will cause great joy for all people.' Today in the town of David, a Savior has been born unto you. He is the Messiah, the Lord." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pruitt. District six, Mr. Templeton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you know, when I came in, you said I needed to explain where I was.
You knew where I was. I wanted you to confess.
But I'm gonna confess it. I am. Well, you know, Dane said we need to go to an event. I didn't want to event. Um, tonight, they had Here for a Reason to Slay the Season Fun Run over at County Maxwell through the lights, and, um, there were a lot of children and adults there. Um, but there were running clubs from Mays, Hodges, and Marywood Schools, um, which I think is phenomenal. And, um, my grandson is participates at Hodges, and this was his first event, and he wanted me to be there, so I was. So I ran the mile with him. Um, and, and it was, so that's where I was. That's my tardiness. That's why I'm dressed the way I am. That's the way it is. But anyway, um, so there's that. Um, and that is, you know, Here for a Reason is a great organization, uh, as they deal with, uh, mental health and suicide prevention. But it was a great event in County Maxwell. Um, let's see, Dr. Moats, I've served with you longer than anybody here.
Yes, you have.
Um, and,
You were here when I started.
Yes, I was. And I guess I'm gonna be here after you left. But, uh, uh, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. I appreciate so much your service, um, uh, to, to the public and the people of Greenwood County. And, you know, you always hear people say, uh, you hear people say sometimes, "So-and-so's a great coach, but a better person." Well, you were a great public servant, but even a better person, and it's been an honor and a privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. Very much.
Um, I want to, uh, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a happy and prosperous new year, and I want to close with horns down, go Tigers.
Mr. Lane, before you offer yours, I think Mr. Allison wanted to have a word.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. One thing I wanted to mention that, uh, I meant to say in the report, I apologize, but when I, I was elected the chairman of the county council, uh, I went to the clerk of council and asked her to take the gavel and put it in the shadow box with the county seal that the year served as chairman, and we presented that to Mr. Templeton. And then when I stepped down as the chairman, when Mr. Brown came on, he presented me one. So I would like to ask this council to do that, to take the gavel, the stone, and, and put it in a, uh,
Absolutely.
shadow box with the dates of his service, and us present that to him next year sometime if he would be willing to come back, uh, to new council for presenting. If we can get him.
We won't make, we won't make you stay, Jeff.
How about that? But I, I really appreciate that, and it's, uh, uh, on my wall in my home, and, uh, it's a great conversation piece and reminds me of a lot of the things. So I would ask that we do that, that that guy will be removed,
Retired.
retired and given to him in the shadow box.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
For the new chairman to come on. So I meant to say that earlier, and I forgot.
Great idea.
It is.
Thank you. Moving right along. Mr. Lane, would you give us a report from District seven?
I'd be happy to, Chairman. But, but before I do, Abby, Councilman Pruitt brought up the Harris Bridge Landing project that we saw from capital sales tax. I would just encourage you to do everything in the world you can do to help get the word out on the meeting that Dane's been proactive in setting up, because the only person that gets probably almost as many calls on that as Dane is me, since our district is separated by about thirty-five feet. Um, but I do think that's very important. I think it'll be very well attended, so thank you, Dane, and thank you, Abby, if you can help with that. Um, Christmas season, we've had two wonderful Christmas parades. I was able to ride along with the Grinch and, uh, walk and toss out candy in the Greenwood Parade, and then Saturday night, we had the nighttime wear shows parade, which I love the nighttime parades. Um, that was just a whole lot of fun, but I froze to death, even creeping along in a convertible when it's about thirty degrees or chilly. You know, uh, Chairman, this told you everything that's been said about your leadership. Um, so this is both a happy day and a sad day. It's a happy day for your wife because I won't be calling your house aggravating you anymore. It's a sad day for me because I gotta figure out now somebody else to aggravate. But, uh, I really do appreciate your service. I said to Laura, uh, when we were at the reception, that, and I said to you, and I'm gonna say again, that you, you stepped in and took over in a tumultuous time for this council, with, with the loss of Chairman Bryant. I mean, and, and that's never gonna be lost on me, that that was, that was a difficult, that was a difficult period in the history of our council, I believe. And you did a remarkable job, and I'll never forget that, and I thank you for that. And with that, Merry Christmas to everyone, and all is well in District seven.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Lane, and thank all of you for your sweet, kind comments. I am grateful to you, each one. Part of my report, uh, from District four, uh, see, Ms. Kathy Miller is here tonight, and so, Ms. Miller, I want to wish you the very best as you assume your place on this council. And counsel, I have no doubt in my mind that she will bring to you a wealth of experience, wisdom, and careful analysis for you to do your work. She will be in a great addition to this council, and I'm glad that you will be following me because I feel like you're gonna hold that standard way high, and I appreciate it. I think the whole county is gonna benefit for her service on this council. Thank you, ma'am. You know, I, I sit, well, first let me thank Susan and the others for the reception this afternoon. You're very kind to do that. It was generous of you to do, and, uh, I'm very grateful, and you're very kind. And, uh, I appreciate the resolution too. I don't know who wrote that, but, uh, you did a great job, and, uh, I will cherish that always, and thank you for doing that. And thank you for your friendship. That's been the most important gift, I guess, I have received, and at Christmas, it's so appropriate. Uh, I sit in this seat this afternoon, not so much sad as satisfied. I have tried to serve Greenwood County to the best of my ability, and for the most part, I think I have done so. And I would like for my final district report to reflect the sentiments of the Apostle Paul, who said, "I have fought the good fight. I have finished my course. I have kept faith." All is well in District four, and I pray that it will always be so. And so, my sixteen-year journey comes to an end, and this meeting ends as well. We are adjourned.